May seventeen, two thousand twenty-three Select Board Meeting. We have amendments to the agenda tonight. I'd just like to add, under Select Board, just discuss our newsletter and Law Valley Railroad. Just discussions. If not, then we'll move on to the minutes of May third. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Number second.
I'll say it.
Are there any additions, corrections? Lesions?
Actually.
If not, others in favor?
Aye.
Post? So carry. Comments from the community? Do you have any comments from the community tonight? Not hearing any. So we just have a few things of correspondence. Belinda gave us an update on the delinquent tax total. But amounts to one hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. That's down about twenty-five thousand dollars from last year. So she'll be working on trying to collect those. As you saw in the orders tonight, the price of sawdust has increased to fourteen-dollar a tote from Black Dirt Farm. I was wondering if there were places like here in our lumber where you could get sawdust cheaper.
That's where we've been picking them up. We usually get it up there.
No, we're not buying it from them?
No, we're not buying it from Black Dirt. But I think the highlight there was...
Is not that our sawdust prices are... There's any reason to deal with it? Right.
The problem was, we noticed contamination in...
I don't know. And I don't see where they bill us for that contamination. Probably will come in May.
Some equipment, meat wrappers in here.
On those. We received the contract from the Chair's Department. I haven't had a chance to read it. I'm sure it's boilerplate and also the voters approve thing. I'd like to take a chance to look it over and we can sign it at our next meeting. That's all right?
Yeah. Anyways, the full board is...
Yeah. I'll pass it around while you guys tonight can look at it. I don't have to look at it. I'm sure it's just like all the others. And just in here is a little memo that I made up. We have hired Bob Hopeley as our new town maintenance person. And he's doing a wonderful job. But I'm asking town employees to let Kirk know if there's any projects. Rather than them all telling me what they need to do. So all projects go through Kirk and he will make the work list. And if there's an emergency or force, you know, they can just call him. That way it just alleviates a lot of confusion and you might be doing things that really aren't in his work list. So I had asked that that memo go up to all employees and their paycheck.
But the last line, I guess is...
That I wrote? Did I misspell something? Alleviate?
Alleviate.
Alleviate.
Supposedly alleviate confusion, but it's help.
And then we just got a memo from V L T that just about their services. It's a trouble with shelter. All right, we'll move on now to Bernard. I invited Bernard to come. His reappointment is up in the end of June and I thought it'd be a good opportunity to come and talk to us about what he has been doing as a health officer. Because we don't, we don't really know.
Well, number one, I test water. Out of the four places, once a year that has to be done. Then I chase septic systems that are leaking. I work with the state to give them bags. And then I deal with all kinds of tenants that are finding fault against their landlords, dealing with black mold and so on and so forth. And clean up around their buildings, the renters, they just throw their trash outside. Matter of fact, I've got one going right now. It's kind of a little boy, perfectly dehumed. Over when I hear on the Turco Road. And I turned talking to Kurt about it. I can't evict the individual because she has a small child and there's no place for her to go. The poor landlord is eating it. And the trash, he has really come a long way first. She had a move that she put into a trailer. I was there today and supposedly Saturday, the trailer was going to leave. And it's constantly like... I worked with Kirk at Keith or Clean Up, Kirman or whatever. And we were going, Kirk was one, fine there. They can't see any sense in finding somebody in that government. Forty with state. And we've had two or three different ones like that. I haven't heard any, done more. I just got a phone call the other day. I was just over older. Got rolled over. Go over east, down, 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 down. They kept her going.
Manly.
No. Yeah, it's manly road. No. I'm right, right with the Jones part.
Oh, Maury Hill.
Maury, Maury Hill, but Maury Hill turns into what is power part of the road.
I was just thinking this Maury Hill.
Yeah, I do too, but it's not. They settled at the end. And we've had residents out there with the same person.
I don't know.
No, if already they don't tell me.
Well, I can.
Yeah, before you get to reporting, they're right in turn.
Oh, out there, yeah.
Well, just way over there. And becomes woke.
Right.
Times are out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm going to have to get a hold of the demon because the neighbors complaining about the dogs scattering their trash or headed that direction tomorrow.
Does the state work with you with the, with the septics?
What's that?
Does the state work with you?
Yes, they do.
Complaints?
Yes, they do. Brian McCall is very good at developing.
Does he, does he take them over or do you work together?
He he takes them right over and he pushes them right up the picture. Once he takes it over, he won't, nothing to do with it, nothing. Don't even talk to people. He hired the individual to work with. He's going to be good.
Anyone else have any questions for Bernard or? Health officers?
You know, one of the concerns, I think, you know, I think that Bernard has done a wonderful job in town in wearing multiple hats, whether it's animal control at the time, fire wardens, handyman at one point, just a little bit of everything. I mean, I think it's been a real asset to the town over the years. But one of my concerns about the health officer role is that that is a role that requires a lot of communication with the state and requires a lot of documentation. And so I know that we've had, you know, incidents where we've have determined a certain building to be condemned.
Right.
Or under improper use, but it has not been registered with the state as condemned. And so what is happening now is the town has run into some conflicts. There is a lawsuit currently outstanding regarding the school street building down here, which we have determined as condemned, but the state doesn't know it's condemned. And so from a legal standpoint, for us to pursue our best interests, we're, we're in a bad spot because we don't have any, any documentation.
I can add into that, the state of Vermont does know about that. I've had Carl Fuller, the Ted Ritter points who made on that, they do know about it.
But I guess my thought is that it doesn't reach the official files. And as a result, we can't, we don't have any leverage. I think in this case, it doesn't really matter because things have moved on and it's been sold and it's going to get torn down with the owner. But that is the, there are technicalities of the health officer. And again, I said, I think you've done wonderful things for the town, but I, I don't think your sweet spot is filling up tons and tons of government documentation.
Okay, I get it. Great.
Yeah, okay. And I can help too, you know, I mean, because it, you know, looking through the health officer's manual, kind of, you know, you go down the steps and you say, oh, please, you shouldn't have registered this, you shouldn't have registered that. And so I'm happy to help with that.
All right.
Anybody else want to ask Bernard anything? Nothing? Okay. Thanks Bernard.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Hopefully you guys have been passed for yet. I'll try.
I think the other thing too is making sure the public knows where the problems are, you know, because I know, I think I know most of them on the phone.
Oh, yeah. No, we know much stuff, but now there's, I just got another one right there. I just sent an hour ago. Right here to forty-four hundred.
What are they doing across the street? Are they doing something over there with the apartment building?
I just went over there. I just called P G with back on the back. He done that septic system.
Right. They didn't put it in too many years ago.
Now Roger, the mayor put it in, rebuilt it.
Right.
Rebuilt it.
Well, we hope to have town septic soon.
I didn't realize. But did you get the whole town or just? Yes. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, we Bernard, we found the water standards.
Yeah.
What? The water test, the water testing?
Yeah.
We found the big box.
Yeah, I know. Belinda told me and I've got some more over the hill.
Okay.
I don't know if you can get some.
Okay.
I have to get one from the night for lead. If they're a separate bottle.
I see.
You can't use the regular bottles. They don't use for years in the town, right? Down south. Like very.
Right.
They have to. The state tests for lead and I don't.
Okay.
Bernard.
Thank you. Michael, are you on?
There he is.
Hi. We need to get your volume up.
That's us. I think that's it. Try again, Mike?
muted?
No, he's not muted. He's good.
We're working on the volume.
All right, now? Can I talk to this mic? Oh, you can hear you just slightly. I gotta figure out what's going on. Give me a second. All right, turn now.
Can you hear us?
You can hear us. All the way up. Kate or Monica, could you guys just say hi? One of you.
Hi, this is Monica.
All right, so we can hear Monica. So Mike, try again. Yeah, so you got something going on with your microphone. Okay. Monica, was Mike also quiet for you?
Yes, he was.
Okay. Thank you.
While he's getting his buy on resolve, just to remind the board, we put an ad out on the front porch forum, I think, inside. Posted it, looking for D R B members. We had one opening. We selected Jeff, she's on the D R B. But in my research, I learned that we can have up to nine members on the board. Presently, we have five. And Michael Parity also said he was interested in serving. He couldn't come for us to just talk to him about it. At previous meetings, so he's here tonight. He would be a good fit to serve on the board.
No, we can, we can barely hear you, Mike. It's just, your microphone level is just really low. No, it's not that.
Sometimes that happens to my microphone too.
Yeah, just trying to see.
I think if Jitterbug ever makes a computer, it'll be the one for me. They're the ones who make the idiot proof solvo. They advertise in North America, the Chinese, and all this stuff.
Mike, if you haven't already tried this, try going into the, the little arrow next to the microphone button in Zoom. Pop that up, see if you can select a different microphone in there and then maybe come back to that one, just kind of reset it.
You can call the speakerphone here.
Yeah, I, we can hear you just ever so slightly, but not enough to hear you in the room. If you are, you can check down Zoom and come back. Sometimes that works. Yeah. Oh, we're zooming in on you and Richard and Kirk. The A I, the A I is...
We're going to call the speakerphone. We can do that.
I bet, I bet it would work out.
He's gone.
Yeah, I told him to log in on them. Yeah, what, what about Candy though? Built, that support, help, bases? Yeah.
I meant to tell you too, I gave you the wrong date at the last meeting for the planning commission annual. Said it was June tenth. It's actually June thirteenth. The regional planning commissioner's seven annual meeting here. This yeah, they selected Walker.
Because we have the best tech in the county, right?
Mike, it's not showing any kind of microphone now.
Yeah, he may not have selected it yet.
It doesn't say anything.
Yeah, it's not connected on the audio yet. You know, if you remember when you first logged into Zoom and asked, she would like to use the device audio.
I know, I've done that by accident before and had to go out.
Can he call somebody on a phone?
He's almost there.
Says he's connecting now. All right, now he's muted.
If he doesn't, if it doesn't work, we'll have to call him.
All right, last try.
Yeah, you got it right.
Perfect.
So I, while we were waiting, I explained to the Select Board about the process of your being interested in the planning commission and D R B position.
Okay.
I've sent you information on what it entail and the documents you have to kind of study to learn about it and Mike seemed to still be interested after that. But we wanted to, to just get to meet you. See if you had any questions, see if the board had any questions of you.
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions, but I'd be happy to answer anything you guys might want to know about me.
Do you have any questions for Mike about appointing him to be on the D R B planning mission? I just have one question. I just want to see, let me word this correctly. I just wondered what you felt about regulations?
I, I think that they're important, but I don't like to over-regulate. I mean, like I said, I know that they have an important piece in society and in, in regulating, you know, in planning.
Because it's really important that you you know, get to know the zoning and subdivision regulations because that's kind of your bible that you need to follow. You can't follow what you think should be right. You have to follow the rules in there that the town voters approved.
Right, right.
At some point, you know, zoning bylaws and regulations can be amended or changed as a process, but just making sure you don't have any difficulty with that.
No, not at all. I guess my biggest thing is that reading through the zoning docs, as I've read them, I, I see some things that if I were to go through the zoning process, I, I think that I would have some questions about some discrepancies. And part of what I'd like to do as a member of the planning commission is to try to make those a little bit easier to use and, and make the process make more sense to me anyway. You know, and, you know, I've seen Wolka has grown some, but not to the extent that Morsell and Hardwick has. And I just, I really am looking forward to being a part of the process to help us reach, you know, what our, what our future is. We're doing so much for the town forest and now with the bike path and all of these things. I, I think Wolka is going to experience a lot of growth over the next five or 10 years and I'd really like to be a part of that.
That sounds wonderful to me anyway.
Yeah.
So I would like to make a motion to appoint Michael Parity to the planning commission and development review board as a member.
I'll second you.
Do we have any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? So carry.
Thank you.
Yes. So I will make sure that the appropriate chairs of those two committees get your contact information. I know there's probably going to be a development review board on May thirty-first, but you will get information about that ahead of time.
Perfect.
Great. Nice meeting you.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Kate and Gordon. And we have a lot of things to talk about for the town forest. Hi Kate, thank you for attending another meeting.
Sure, no problem. Thanks for having me. So the first thing on my agenda is we need a letter signed by the Select Board that gives permission to construct the bridge as part of the Vorac grant on the rec trail or on the, the rec property, the rec fields property. And also that you will guarantee public access to that bridge for a certain period of time. So the the Vorac grant money comes kind of with strings that say that anything created with that money is going to be guaranteed public access for a certain amount of time. And the community forest will have a conservation easement on it that guarantees public access forever. So that's kind of taken care of by that, the conservation easement, but it's more the both the school property and then the town rec property that aren't covered by that easement, that we just need a separate letter signed by the Select Board. So Linda both the school property and then the town rec property that aren't covered by that easement, that we just need a separate letter signed by the Select Board, so, um, Linda has a draft of that. Um, we just need to send that to the state for the finalization of the Vorac grant.
So it's 25 years for the bridge and 10 years for the trails, but the trail is a problem. It's a letter that, um, Kate kind of drew up on what was required, so she just needs the Board to motion to approve our using, uh, allowing this to take place on town property, and this has to do with a trail that comes from the school down across the east Elmore bro- um, Flatiron Road, east Elmore Brook, onto the Wolkert Recreation, beyond the ball field. We've already approved it once, but we have to do it again.
Yeah, so you approved kind of the permission letter when we applied for the grant, but this, um, also says you're going to guarantee public access to it for that, a certain amount of time.
Yes, I'll make the motion that we approve it.
I'll second. Do we have further, um, questions or comments on my motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Okay, I will sign it and, um, I will have the town office, um, scan it to you tomorrow.
That's great, appreciate it.
Okay.
Um, and then we just had kind of three minor topics that we just wanted, um, to make sure the town knew about and also, um, kind of agree with, um, that we discovered during our due diligence. Um, the first is that um, the Bourne property, w- um, they'll be able to, uh, give you a warranty deed for the 399 acres south of the railroad. The area that they own north or northeast, um, of the railroad, Lamoval rail trail, along the river, um, it's, it's, it's kind of three separate, very small areas of the riverbank. Um, they don't have, or we can't find in the title work, guaranteed access across the railroad um, area, so they're just going to be able to give you a quick claim deed for that portion of the property, and we just want to make sure that works for you, I mean, the public, of course, has access all along the Lamoval rail trail and will have access to the riverbank and the town forest on both sides, it's just the Bourne parcel itself has no legal access across the Lamoval rail trail, if that makes sense. So that was issue number one. Um, issue number two, um, which I've spoken about before, the, um, Phase One Environmental Assessment on the Bedell property found two potential recognized environmental conditions that we're moving forward with a um, Phase Two analysis um, as soon as I get approval from Salvador Morales that the EPA and DEC have signed off on all the forms. One of those, um, recognized environmental conditions is, um, with the practice burn of the trailer, and that actually won't be on property that the town will own. Um, we're doing the soil testing and we'll clean it up, but that's part of what is proposed to be part of the affordable housing lot that's going to be owned by, um, Habitat for Humanity, and they'll be able to build a house there, but that'll get cleaned up. The potential recognized environmental condition that will be on the town property is a pole-mounted transformer, um, from a former, um, residence that was up there, that's a little further kind of uphill, and so we're going to be removing that transformer and doing soil tests underneath it and cleaning it up, so just wanted to kind of inform you of that and our plans around that.
So when you do the Phase Two for that, you'll be including that umbrella insurance in there?
Yeah, if it, if it's appropriate, um, I've only used umbrella for underground, um, oil spills, um, but I'm happy to look into it to see if it's appropriate for this pole-mounted transformer issue.
Okay, maybe I'm misinformed on that of what umbrella is used for, I thought it was for any phase two, so I probably mis-informed, but just as long as, um, we'll just check it out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to look into that and also talk to Sal- Salvador about that too. And happy to work with you to enroll it, um, if it's a good idea. Um, the last thing is, um, there is, uh, there's a small pond on the Bourne property, um, it's less than point six acres. It has a small kind of earthen dam on it, and, um, it was, it looks like the pond was built and that dam was built, uh, sometime between 1960 and 1976, based on old, um, aerial photos. So we connected with Ben Green, who's the Dam Safety Engineer for Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, to kind of learn more about the dam and, and what should be done about it, and they don't, um, so, ones that are that small, they don't keep track of, um, they, it doesn't need a permit, it's considered a minimal hazard dam um, and meets kind of the low hazard definition. Um, they don't have any inspection requirement by DEC, they don't have any um, requirement, um, for a permit to build, repair, or remove it. Um, they do have the authority to inspect it if they want to, um, but usually they don't get involved with dams that small, uh, their recommendation is, um, that if you want to continue the pond to be there, that you maintain the dam just by keeping the trees off of it, so it would just kind of be, um, uh, cutting down any trees that grow over time, um, just on the, the dam area. So just wanted to let you know about that and I mean, if you want to remove the dam and remove the pond, that is something we're happy to work with you on, but I think it's um, right now, and I, you know, it could be a potential swimming spot and also could be a potential fishing spot for the public.
Kate, can you say it again, the name of the person that you were, uh, talking to about that?
Ben Green, he's the Dam Safety Engineer for Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, and I'm happy to forward you the email correspondence we had with him.
Cool, thank you.
Sure. Um, so that's all, um, the specific topics I had, unless you want to jump into current use, or you want to start with Gordon first?
Right, um, so I asked you, um, I just wanted to know when, um, we would need to contact our town attorney and what we because he reached out to me about this, because your attorney had reached out to him, so just try to get that clear, because I told him I, I've reached back to him because we were talking tonight.
Yeah, so, um, if the Select Board doesn't have any concerns about those three topics, um, then the best time to get in, uh, in touch with your attorney is before closing, and he'll review, you know, the easements and the deeds and all the title work, um, and due diligence at that time. Um, or, you know, we're happy to engage with him now, if you want to kind of give, get him involved at this point, it's up to you guys.
Great. We'll talk about it. I just was in, um, I've been in email discussions with Kate and Gordon uh, over the last couple of weeks, particularly about current use, I it's a little confused, um. And I, I just didn't want any surprises at the end, I wanted to make sure that it worked with our um, wastewater project, because there has to be like a pump station or something down below where it might be a parking area. I did get an email from Seth this morning that he has talked to you, and you've talked to the engineers, and it seems to be alright.
Yeah, um, we talked about whether it would be, you know, in general, okay with the funding sources and the easement, we didn't specifically talk about current use. Um, I think you'll need to talk directly to Emily Potter, um, about whether she considers that development or not, um, so the towns are not allowed, eligible to be enrolled in current use, so because these two properties were, are currently enrolled in current use, there's a contingent lien that remains on the property. Um, usually the conservation easement, um, that is on the property, which, you know, is about conserving forests, is, um, uh, compatible with the current use lien, the only place where it isn't is really with structures, um, so you know, with trails and with parking lots, as long as the property can still be used for forest management, you know, you close down a certain section of trails when you want to do a harvest there, or that a parking lot could be used as a, um, log landing, if, you know, for occasional timber management, then both of those are fine and not considered development. Um, it's, the, the question is really around structures, um, structures associated with forestry, and also with conservation in the statute are not considered development, so, um, if you had, for example, a sugaring house, that wouldn't be considered development, um, there is a question about whether a recreational structure like a picnic pavilion would be considered development. In my discussions with, um, both county foresters and with, um, Keith, um, oh, I'm laying out his last name, um. He's, he's, he works for Forest Parks and Rec, Keith Thompson, um, and he's kind of in, in Forest Parks and Recs in charge of everything related, related to current use. And, you know, Forest Parks and Rec is really the entity and county foresters that will bring something to UVA to be evaluated if they think development has happened on a property contrary to either current use plans or contrary to current use liens. In my discussions with county foresters, no one, none of them really track current use liens, um, after a property is no longer enrolled, I mean, technically they're supposed to be, but they don't really, so that's, that's a whole nother issue about kind of enforcement, um, but technically, you know, you are still under the current use lien where development structures would not be allowed, so um, what I would advise is that you, um, that we, you know, directly connect with the county forester, Emily Potter, about the Forest Main and, um, any, um, kind of power station or pump station associated with the Forest Main, and see if she would consider that to be development, and if so, you would need to remove that area from the current use lien by paying a land use change tax. Um, that's 10% of, um, the area affected, um, and your lister would evaluate kind of the value of that area, um. It would be the value of that area after the conservation easement is on the property, because that's when you are taking ownership of the property after the conservation easement is on it, so the value is going to be pretty low, because it can't be used as development. Um, but it still would be a cost to the town for the area that you officially develop, either with a picnic structure or with the Forest Main and the pump house, if Emily considers that to be development. So we can have this conversation with her now, we can have this conversation with her when she reviews and approves the management plan, um. I think, you know, because the planning with the Forest Main is moving forward, it would be a good idea to have it with that conversation with her now, about, I mean, I, I haven't seen any specific maps yet, I think Peter Lazorczyk was going to send that out, but I haven't seen one yet.
He presented us with maps, um, a couple of months ago, I think, didn't he, Kurt?
Yeah.
And that's where I saw it, and I said, oh no.
I mean, it would be a very minor cost as part of the larger wastewater system to remove that portion of the lien from that portion of the property. You don't have to remove the lien from the whole property. Um, we've also been in discussions, um, on a larger sense about uh, requesting, um, removal of the lien, uh, by the tax department, so anytime the state or the federal government acquires land that, um, has been enrolled in, in UVA, um, they can, uh, request um, that that lien be removed, uh, we just did one two weeks ago, in fact, and so it's, it's kind of a gray area in the statute about whether municipalities can do that or not, but that is a question we have right now in front of Elizabeth Hunt, um, the head of UVA, to see if there's a way that a town can, can just request removal of the lien because you're not eligible for current use anymore.
Well, I would love that.
It's my understanding that, um, that no towns have ever been, um, wha- whatever towns have done on their town forests, and quite a lot of them are, have been created by private land that had been enrolled in current use, that no county forester has ever, like, taken them to UVA and said, this is development, you need to charge them land use change tax, so it doesn't happen, or it hasn't happened yet, but, you know, it is, it could happen, so it is wise to be safe.
I figured it was about seventy thousand dollars to, to buy it all.
Seventy thousand? Oh, I think that's for, for, for the whole property. Um. Uh, I think that's high, because it would be evaluated with the conservation easement on the property.
Well, I'm not sure if our listers reduce the value for conservation easements, do they? No, they don't. On anybody's land.
The, the state tax department recommends that they do. There's a, there's a memo that recommends that lister takes, take those into account.
I didn't think they did, and I did ask a lister for that figure, I just was curious, that's all.
But Kate, you're suggesting that, um, at least it's a gray area, maybe it hasn't been adjudicated as to whether or not municipalities can can follow the same process as the state governments, um, and, and have the lien removed, um, just as a matter of course, because it's no longer in, you know, it's, it's not private land anymore.
Uh, correct, um, that was my conversation with Keith, um, that it, it is currently a gray area in the statute, and that it might be something um, Forest Parks and Rec, uh, could officially change in the statute, um, you know, when that comes up in the legislature again, UVA always comes up in legislature every couple of years, um, but for this particular example, you know, we want a clarity now, rather than waiting till the statute gets changed. But there is, potentially, there might be a way to get the lien discharged just by asking, so I have that question in front of Elizabeth Hunt right now.
Would it be best to wait until we own it, so she doesn't go back on the previous landowners?
No, it won't affect the current, wait, can you ask that question again?
Yeah, that's, yeah. Would it, would it be better if we waited until we owned it rather than now with the current landowners in it?
Oh yeah, we wouldn't be discharging them from UVA until the property, but we wanted to see if it's possible once the town owns it.
Okay, I think we
Of its current use.
Yes.
So we want to turn attention to the
Yeah.
The stewardship plan.
We're going to work on the draft stewardship plan.
Yeah. So the, the draft stewardship plan, there's, there's a lot to this, um, it's
Can you hear Kate?
Yes, I can hear.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, so there's, there's a lot to this plan, um, a big deal of it had, uh, was given to us as a part, as, as a draft, um, thanks to the work of Aiden Hayden, um, and we're really following very closely on the draft that, that they provided. That they provided, um, because it ticks the boxes that, that need to be done. For the, the sake of the funders essentially, um, so Kate, I'm gonna, you know, feel free to jump in if I'm to speak on, on any of these points, but. Um, I'll, you know, explain my understanding of, of, and then, um. Uh, you know, the importance of it, how we got to where we are and what we look before going forward, um. So, we, in, in order to acquire the town forests. Um, with the help of the, the various funding sources that uh Trust for Public Land is, is petitioning on our behalf, essentially, or working with. Um, they have various conditions about the, the um ongoing stewardship of the forest, and Kate's referred to some of them already. Um, you know, with respect to having conservation easements, with respect to public access and so forth. And essentially, the stewardship plan, um, uh lays out. I- i- an overview of the forest itself, that the funding agencies can look at and review and understand what is that they're, they're giving us money for. And also captures uh our plans for what we want to do with it, um, at least in general terms. That, at least on some very specific points, but well, on, on some specific points that, that. Uh, the, that need to be nailed down, um, places where we need to state our intention. Um, so that it's clear to the, the entities that are providing the funding. So, um, to that end. We have, with the time, when I say we, now I'm talking about the town forest committee, um, have. Conducted a, a couple of surveys in the town, um, you know, or, or public opinion surveys which we've collected and. Um, discussed it like in our meetings, uh, and looked at the specific points which have been highlighted. Uh, in, in the, as decision points in the draft that, that Trust for Public Land has provided. So, the document itself, um, ultimately needs to be approved by the select board. And so, the forest committee sees its role as bringing a essentially final draft to the select board for approval. Um, now, it's a big document, and like I say, a great deal of the document has been sort of, um. Given to us as a template, uh, to, to be filled out, so. Um, I'm not proposing that, you know, that I should read the whole document to you tonight, but, but nevertheless, and as we proceed to, to the final approval. Um, I hope you guys will all take time to read it offline. What I, what I do want to do is talk about the key features which are decisions. That the forest committee is, it, um, you know, recognizes the decisions that are required within the document. And what we're proposing as, as the decisions, you know, what, what we recommend to the select board that you should sign off on as. As the decisions that, that need to get uh written into the plan. So, so makes sense so far. Okay, the, the things then that, that uh we have been working on and, and consider as the key decisions. Um, there's, the, the, the first and most important thing I will say is. What we articulate is the purpose for the town forest overhaul, and based on time feedback, based on discussion. Um, what's our guiding purpose for the decisions that we're making and what, what we expect. To carry forward as a guiding purpose for the, the plan, so a- after, um, you know, a couple of sessions of deliberation in the, the committee. Uh, we drafted the purpose as follows. That it's. The local community forest purpose is to ensure that the experience of being within a natural environment. Remains accessible to current and future residents, guests, and the greater community. While preserving and maintaining the natural character and attributes of the forest. So, e- essentially, what this, to unpack that a little bit, um. The majority of the survey responses, one of the overwhelming things that came back in the survey response, what was preserving the character of our town. Um, preserving the forest, that recreation is fantastic, um, but it's secondary to sort of conservation and reservation. Um, and so we put that, you know, we articulated that here, that, that, um. That as, as population grows, as change comes, you know, we're talking about the development, uh, review board and planning commission. Um, the, the, you know, the thing that's uh becomes more and more precious is the ability just to be out in the woods. So, um, that's, that's what we take as our guiding principle on, on uh downstream decisions. So, then, um, following up in that. The, the, the key decisions, um, and you know, sort of practical tactical items. Uh, are a handful of specific uses. That uh tend to come up in, in town forests, um, discussion with Kate, who even pointed out these, these particular things is. Areas that often become hot topics uh with people and something that we, we definitely need to have a position on. Um, as, as we take it to closing. So, so this, um, I do want to read this to you, uh, and, and tell you. Uh, what we're proposing at, at this point, this is, uh, um, we've, we've been through a process with this of reviewing the survey. Um, having subcommittee working on the actual text, um, we voted on it last week at the town forest committee meeting, so this is. Um, essentially, uh, you know, our, our draft committee of committee is the word to, to, to you guys. Um, so I'll just, uh, I'll read through the, the headlines, what the topics are, uh, quickly and then, uh, get into each one individually. So it's hunting, fishing, trapping, dogs, horses. Bicycles, snowmobiles, all terrain vehicles, public events and gatherings, camping. Bonfires and cookouts and swimming. So, uh, obviously interesting topics, potentially controversial. Um, and, and here's what we're proposing, um, hunting. Hunting is a longstanding tribute to the Vermont forest land, and many community members have a history of hunting on the properties. That, that have become the town forest property. However, as public property, the town forest is no longer exempt from the federal gun-free schools zone act of nineteen ninety. amended nineteen ninety-six, which prohibits carrying firearms within a thousand feet of school property. Therefore, at this time, hunting in accordance with state regulations is allowed in the town forest. Except within a safety zone around the school property established by the forest stewardship committee. At this time, the safety zone is defined as the portion of the town forest that is north and east of Gates Farm Road. So. Um, I'll just keep going and, you know, stopping their questions. Fishing, fishing in accordance with state regulations is allowed in the town forest. Trapping, unattended traps represent a risk factor to other recreational uses of the forest. Trapping is allowed for the management of nuisance populations when deemed necessary by the forest stewardship committee or the select board or their appointed delegates. In order to properly manage the forest in accordance with the stewardship plan and principles theory. Recreational trapping is not allowed. Dogs, domestic dogs are allowed on the property on a leash in accordance with the town ordinance. Owners or caretakers must collect and dispose of dog waste. Horses, horse traffic requires special consideration with respect to erosion control and trail maintenance. Invasive species control compatibility with other uses and parking accommodations, horses are not allowed on the property at this time. Bicycles, bicycles are allowed in the town forest on designated trails only. Bicycle users must adhere to any and all posted trail restrictions and yield to other trail users. Electric bikes are not permitted at this time, the select board and forest stewardship committee may allow exceptions in cases where they are serving as assistive technology. For a person with a physical disability. Snowmobiles, snowmobiles are permitted on the existing vast trail as conditions allow, snowmobiles must adhere to vast guidelines with respect to trail closures. Due to conditions. ATVs, dirt bikes and other motorized recreational vehicles require special consideration with respect to compatibility. Uh, with other uses due to noise and exhaust, erosion control, and trail maintenance and parking accommodations. In accordance with the terms of the conservation easement, motor vehicles are not permitted for recreational usage except as noted above. Um, snowmobiles and e-bikes operated uh for assist technology. Public events and gatherings sponsored by the town or other entities may occur with prior approval from the forest stewardship committee, town select board. Or other appointed subcommittee, provided they are freely included in a non-discretive reporting manner. And aligned with the principles and conditions of the overall stewardship plan. Approval will be conditional on commitment from the event organizers to ensure proper site care and post-event cleanup, as well as other conditions that committee or select board. May choose to establish in the future. Camping, and in further study, overnight camping is not permitted in the town forest. Bonfires and cookouts, fires shall be allowed in sites to be designated by the stewardship committee. Fires are not allowed outside of these sites except as planned forest management activity or facilities maintenance activities. Uh, and finally, swimming in the, the streams, rivers, and ponds shall be allowed in areas designated by the forest stewardship. So, that's the, as I said, the, the critical, um, choice factors which we're across and. Uh, you know, how we recommend is the, the plan should be written.
Yeah, I had a opportunity to read these, um, because we posted them on the website and, so, um, and. Uh, I thought that, to, obviously, I mean, I know the forest committee, uh, is, is very thorough. Um, and I'm sure these have all been well thought out, but one. Question that comes to mind is these are regulations, uh, that the public needs to abide by. And, um, so I'm curious how, how that will be communicated. Uh, for instance, a thousand feet from a school, would that be done through signage or? Just communicate that to the public that, you know, kind of figure out where a thousand feet is and try to go the other way. That kind of thing, uh, when it comes to dog waste, uh. Will the forest committee be able to provide, uh? Dog, uh, bags, uh, those kinds of things. But I, I thought all in all, it was pretty thorough and you could tell it was very well thought out. So my only question really kind of come down to that detail of communication, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of opportunities for, um. Addressing all of those particular points, um, you know, the, the process of, uh, I mean, the Vorac grants. Um, I, I think specifically are presented as kiosks, I guess, two kiosk people. Um, obviously, uh, you know, guidelines and, um, trail maps and using those and regulations. Are exactly, I think, for most of them, like kiosks, I think a lot of this stuff, you know, obviously, um. We tell people what the rules are and hopefully people follow them, that's, that's kind of what it comes down to. Um, there is, we, we did do some research about, um. In case we need to have teeth, um, in these provisions, what, um, you know, kind of teeth. And, and, and rip into the forest, and for plants and what's available. And, um, essentially, uh, there is, there's an example of a town, uh, forest plan. That specifically highlights the state statutes, um, saying, you know, and these are town regulations, violations, and misdemeanor. Um, and punishable under statutes, you know, up to a five hundred dollar fine or something, so there's, you know.
Well, that's, that's same as Kurt, the only thing that popped into my head was, um. You know, violators, how, how you enforce that and thinking of. In my mind quickly, what ordinance is did we have in place already that might need to be amended to? Um, bring the forest in line, you know. With that, I mean, we have a snowmobile ordinance, you know, you would amend it so it didn't, you know. It allows snowmobiles to cross some town roads, but you have to amend it to have. It's saying not allowed in the forest and then you could. You know, have a penalty, so I think that's something we could.
Yeah, to filter.
We would have a look at to, um, on our end, um, and decide how we want, how much we wanted to. And divorce it.
Right.
That's always an issue too.
Thank you. Out of curiosity, the, the decision on e-bikes, uh, because this has come up with the rail trail. Um, there's people on the trail using e-bikes, and I don't think the rail trail management has. Have been able to communicate clarity on that, not really sure whether you can or you can't. And so, so, so some people on the trail are reprimanding other people because they're on an e-bike and e-bike is all this. So I was just curious where you, what you're thinking was about e-bikes.
We had some discussion around it, um, it's, it's a difficult topic, um, because it spans a lot of. Uh, uh, you know, spans from assisted technologies, um, through, uh, you know, class, I think they're called class three e-bikes. Which are essentially little electric motorcycles.
Oh.
Um, on my hands, uh, and, um, there's, there's plenty of e-bikes which are. Difficult to distinguish from, um, from, from a regular bicycle that, you know, have, have pedal assist and. And, um, you know, they, they enable somebody to, who otherwise may not be able to bike for very long to go biking all day long. Um, so it's, it's really hard to, to pin it down. Um, one of the things we discussed, which I find, you know, compelling concern is, um, with even with, you know. I thought, let's say, e-mountain bikes, for instance, um, you know, somebody, you can do a lot more riding on a trail. Um, with an e-bike, and so for the sake of, of trail preservation, um, so maybe it's better not to. Um, for the sake of the fact that that's, you know, a place is difficult to get to, uh, becomes a lot easier to get to with an e-bike.
Yeah.
Um, and, and again, you have to think about that in terms of just amount of trail usage. So, um, so there's all of that, and then the, the clincher for us was, um, something that Kate had forwarded. Um, with respect to the Vorac grants, that Vorac, um, is trying to figure out where they land with this, but at this point. Um, they regard them as essentially motorized routes, um, so, you know, they, uh. Will fund a project that allows e-bikes, you know, conditional use of e-bikes, provided that there's a clear. Uh, monitoring and enforcement process for how the e-bikes are used, and we don't really want to get into that, you know, so we're just. No, except in, you know, the case where it's an obvious, um, helping somebody with a disability, you know, can't say none of that.
They seem to be growing and popular, um, so, yeah.
Two, two small clarifications, um. Uh, the, it's not the Vorac grant, it's the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board grant, the one that's being used to purchase the land that. Um, has that definition of e-bikes, not Vorac, Vorac doesn't care. Um, and also Linda, um, snowmobiles are allowed on the property on the designated trail, so. Um, the, the current vast trail that goes through the property, snowmobiles would be allowed just there, so I, I.
Yeah.
I don't think you have to change ordinance for that, but. That's it.
Is there, um, in this plan, is there opportunity there for, um. People with handicaps and stuff like that, um, is all this taken into consideration? So all people can be on, in the forest?
So, um, the, we're not, uh, we're not addressing, um. We put, see how about this, um. We, we, we have made a, a specific policy about the, the types of trails or, um. You know, a, a, a requirement that, you know, trails have to be ADA accessible, um, you know, ADA compliant. Um, one of the discussion points that's come up in fact is that a lot of, um. You know, uh, essentially hiking trails, um, you know, trying to develop hiking trails. essentially hiking trails, um, you know, turn developed hiking trails, apart hiking trails, clearly not development from a per use perspective, from a forestry, forest management perspective. Um, a multi-use trail, um, that is, that's wheelchair accessible, uh, starts to be something that we have to lose control and, um, you know, potentially bringing in some equipment. Uh, and now, now you start getting into an area where, where it becomes questionable to whether or not it's development. It is truly multi-use and part of the forest management plan, that's one thing. Um, so, uh, this is really a good place to point out, um, another principle that, that, uh, um, but speaking personally, but I think that's also viewed and shared by a lot of the forest committee members. One of the things is, we, we recognize that use is going to change over time. Um, so, uh, another point of this is we need, we're proposing, um, requirements in the, the conservation easement anyway, um, proposing a standing committee, um, whose role will be to evaluate, you know, to continue and sort of monitor and evaluate the, the mix of uses. And the things that are, you know, written down right now are, um, you know, there are few places in these decisions where it's specifically called out at this time. Um, uh, horses are not allowed in front of first, and we listed out the concerns about why, um, if, you know, problematic elements of heavy horses. Um, our view is that if, if there, um, you know, if there's a mono county enforcement ship association, for instance, that were to come to us and say, we understand all your concerns, here's the things we would do to, to address those concerns. And within those concerns, we'd like to, you know, propose this usage. Um, we think that the, the, you know, there should be a standing committee that can, can evaluate those concerns and come to this landmark with recommendation to, um, you know, uh, change the list of approved users to, to expand. We're, we're definitely taking a stance that it's better, it's, it's easier to say no today and open up usage tomorrow than it would be to say yes today and have to go and close it down later. And so, um, that's the, that's the approach.
Good. So I don't know if you'll be on this standing committee or wish to after all this work, and I really appreciate all your work on this committee. But I would hope that the committee would at least consider, um, you know, if you put a kiosk or a place where people gather and have a bonfire, at least there's a way for people with disabilities to be able to get to that point and at least, I'm not asking that all trails be accessible, but at least there's something for them in this forest to, um, or something separate for them in this forest, um, that's a separate trail, something that's just made for them.
Yeah.
A, a short one, but just to feel like they're part of it, um.
I, I think that's a fantastic point and, and, you know, certainly take that back to the committee. But, but, um, I also anticipate there will be no objection anywhere from the committee. And I'd also point out that, that the, the purpose statement, um, is, is to ensure that the experience remains accessible to permanent future residents, yes, et cetera, and so it's, um, I would say it's included in that. And I, I happily, uh, recommend that we call it out especially.
Just to note that, uh, Sinuosity is very experienced in, um, creating, uh, multi-use trails that are used, can be used by wheelchairs as well as, um, bikes made specifically for handbikes. Uh, so that can be part of kind of the conversation with Sinuosity as they, uh, get more input from the stewardship committee and the select board and the public, um, this summer about the trail plan. And that it very well might be, you know, one good loop that they could create specifically.
Yeah, one little path. I saw, I saw something on public TV. It's a certain way of making a path for people with different developmental things and stepping, they just stepped on different tree places and calming, uh, you know, it was short. But it was something, and it was different that we probably wouldn't want to go on, but, um, it had an effect on them.
The state parks have a good design for this. Most state parks have a nature trail, which is short. And, um, a lot of them are designed to be flat. And, and so it's like a loop that's designed specifically for this kind of thing. There's some good models out there, Elmore has.
Wonder, um, do you have a definition for trapping? In your thing, because there's lots of trapping, this half a mile trapping, this lockhole trapping, you know? What kind of trapping are you talking about in there?
Um, so, uh, that's a good question. I, I, I don't, um, we've had a lot of discussion around it. Honestly, there's, there's room for more discussion as well. And I know that a lot, that, that there's discussion happening actually in the, um, within the state legislature, or has been at least, uh, in this term. Um, uh, so, um, I guess what I would propose is I can take the action item back to the committee to, to.
Clarity on what, uh, what the committee means by trapping? Because what I heard from you was trapping was allowed if, um, you know, for some kind of animal management of sorts.
Like if you had to make a bee removal and you don't want them or something.
Right.
Or if there's something that's causing problematic problems, you want to.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Would you trap them in a cage or would you trap them in a field?
Yeah, there, there is, um,
I would like to, I would like to know that.
Yeah, I understand from the people who are, who are deeper into this than I, there, there are a lot of support. And, uh, you know, I mean, it's, it's a hot topic, obviously. Um, there's, there's people who are just dead set against any kind of trapping for any reason. Um, there's, uh, you know, arguments to be made that, uh, it's a legitimate, um, way to manage populations and to, um, you know, to feed humans. Um, so.
It eats the alternative of you can't trap any animals. And they have hundreds of thousands starving animals that are disease-ridden, dying of disease because you're too many in this little area. And they don't employ people, so you either go to knock the population down, or they completely eliminate all reasons.
Very.
You know, my.
I own it.
So, so we can, we can explore.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
What, um, if you.
Yeah.
I just want to say, uh, um, uh, Kate, I need, can you speak to the timeline by which a final version of this plan should be approved by the select board?
Yes, so we are, um, trying to close, uh, if we secure the federal funds by July, which is when they are going to be announcing the federal funds, um, then we think that the earliest we can close is by January. And we need to give, um, the funders sixty days review of the management plan. So that would bring kind of select board review of the management plan by October. Review and approval.
So Gordon, talk to me about, um, the idea that, um, when we had something in writing that we should have a public hearing on that. So we'll work that out with him. We'll have a public hearing, um, take public comments on the plan. And then at the, at another meeting, the board will vote to approve and then. So sometime this summer.
Yeah.
So I guess you just let me know when you're ready, um, and we will spit along this public hearing. Do you think it's best doing it in select board meeting? Do you think we should have a special meeting between the two committees? Um, any thoughts on how we should handle this?
I think we could have a, a public event, um, you know, and, and merge meeting of the two committees. I think that the, um, you know, on the one hand, we've obviously had lots of public inputs.
Right.
Um, and, and opportunity for public, uh, comments to come forward. The other hand, I, I definitely would like to get all the public comments, it, you know, um, uh, in advance of, of finding moving in. Um, so, uh, and, and I absolutely want to make sure that we're probably due process to, to, you know, create some valid vision. So, um, as my main.
So we've had a lot of public comment on specifics, but I think the public should comment on the final written draft. This wording says it all, if you read it carefully. You know, they should be able to see it written by mine.
So, um, so closing in December, um, so sixty days prior to December, that's, um, you know, October, let's say first of October should be approved by the select board. So before, you know, August, September timeframe to have public, uh, you know, a final, a version for public review and, and final. I can work with you, Linda, to, to plan the details and logistics.
All right. Anything else? Any other questions?
Good for now.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
What is the next forest committee meeting? Uh, we are meeting on, um, second Tuesdays.
Right.
At, uh, um, so, uh, six P M.
Tuesday?
Tuesdays, yes.
Tuesdays.
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursdays.
It's Thursday.
Thursdays.
Yeah, because I was in the flats.
Yeah, 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 I mean, um, and school board meetings were Tuesday and another Wednesday, so I apologize. Second Thursday, yeah. Just no Jason wasn't.
Thank you, Kate, very much for your time, your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Bye.
Is that our partner?
Yes, she is.
Well, you're welcome to stay, but, um.
I was excited about it.
Yeah, project managers report now.
Um, I thought I'd start, uh, with the transfer station. Um, a couple of updates regarding the transfer station. One is that, um, we have been hearing recently that the Department of Corrections uh, may be discontinuing their worker program beginning in July.
I saw that on the front page of the paper.
Okay.
Like the Aladonia market or something today.
Saying so what? What was driving that? They can't find people to get arrested?
No, they, they sent the article, I didn't buy it, but hey. So because they're, the legislature changed a lot of, um, white people are going to probation and a lot of them are going through diversion.
The bottom line to us is that, uh, we're going to lose, uh, an important resource.
Oh, yeah.
And so, July is not that far away and, uh, so we're going to have to do some thought about how we're going to handle this. Speaking, uh, to that, um, we did have, uh, one of the DOC assistants was, uh, put in a position last weekend to take money.
That's not good.
Which is.
Not good at all.
And, uh, so we're going to, uh, compose a letter, uh, a, a letter to the personnel file, um, of Sylvia, uh, to cease and desist.
Uh, yeah.
That activity. Um, we also found that, uh, members of the public were being allowed over the chain to stamp down, um, the, the rollups.
He's, he's got to be out there more.
So that's a liability. And it's not that he doesn't know that that's happening. They, these members of public, uh, have been doing apparently for a long time, as they say, helping out the old guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a major liability.
It's a major liability, yeah. So, we have that concern. Um, and, uh, also, uh, we are getting charged again by Black Dirt Fund for having contamination in the compost. So all of these things kind of come back down to what we've been talking about for months now. And it's the ability to monitor what's going on there with the public. Um, and I think we're going to have to ask Sylvia to not pardon himself in the, in the shade.
Yeah.
But be out there.
I mean, the car is right outside of the door by God's sake. I mean, it's.
No, I just wanted to make everyone aware that the problems are kind of going on. And we're definitely going to have a resource problem with, uh, I don't have it, I, I, next time I'd like to propose some solutions, but it's not like things come to that one quite to that extent. Um, so, uh, moving on, uh, guardrails will be installed this week, uh, which is exciting, especially up on East Hill Road, uh, which is a bit dangerous point. Um, update on the Damian Webb versus Woka lawsuit is that that has been, um, uh, we had filed with our insurance company, uh, who in turn, uh, hired representation, uh, for defense. And that representation to the law firm, Adam Middlebury, um, they have contacted us once to collect some, uh, back information. Um, and we have not heard from them since. But I, I suspect we will there shortly. Uh, if not, I'll be trying to get in touch with them next week just to do an update. Um, sometimes with legal firms, you want to wait a little bit so you're not, uh, getting charged for every, you know, microsecond. But we won't, uh, we actually will not be charged for this unless we are found to be negligent in some way. So we won't be charged. There was a little bit of a mowing overlap. We, if you remember, we brought, um, Isaac, uh, to, um, yeah, do one mowing, and then out of the blue, Brad Blaisdell showed it. So, uh, Brad actually mowed, I didn't do anything else in terms of, uh, trimming or anything like that. So I got ahold of Isaac and, and he is fine with waiting till the end of May. Uh, but I did ask him to come by and to do the trimming, which he did do. So, um, we're going to have a one week or two week overlap here. Uh, actually Brad's contract expires in, end of June. Uh, but he's not going to, you know, we verbally agreed that we're going to switch him as of the end of May. Um, LED lights in the garage, uh, so Gould Electric is going to be in the garage tomorrow to fix the LED lights then at that point. So the garage will be a hundred percent LED. Um, as you probably know, fluorescent lights that are, will no longer be sold as, uh,
July term.
July first, and always July first. Um, so if these things burn out, it's, they're done. So as a result, I went out and, um, also had to, um, do a estimate on this building to have this building be a hundred percent, uh, LED. And, uh, because I was just curious what it's going to cost, the quote came back at fifty-three hundred dollars. Um, now I think that there are quotes out there, uh, there's, I'm sorry, there's, um, grants out there that will help.
Well, efficiency Vermont is hovering stuff till July first right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's who.
So fluorescent bulb won't be available.
Uh, no, no. No worry. Um, but you can, you can keep them as long as they're, once they burn out, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, what else? So Linda and I have been talking about the leasing. So Linda and I have been talking about leasing the land, um, over here, uh, off a railroad street. So that we can have six, ten feet of mowing, not sorry, plowing access. Uh, otherwise we just block the access to the rail trail and, um. Uh, and also trying to look for a location for a, a port-alet to go, go in over there. Um. I, I think our, our, we agree that, uh, we need to do this lease before winter sets in. Um, but so it's kind of a, a, I do know that when we leased land over by the. Town garage, it did not take that long. Took a couple of weeks, but, but they were highly motivated. Cause we were sitting on top of their, our building was on top of the railroad trail. Yeah, so we, we had to do a little loop around here.
It's too bad, uh, we didn't look into quit claiming it. Cause if you use so much property for such a length of time, you can claim it.
Reclaim it.
You can claim.
Oh.
Ad, adverse possession.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Now, since you made an agreement to pay for a lease.
Yeah, this free, lease is free.
Right, but still.
We didn't make any agreement. Well.
Yeah, I don't know.
Um. Nine eleven sign installation, um. Linda has been moving forward with this project, getting nine eleven signs in half the posts. Um, they, the first batch should be coming up and, uh, Bob, uh, our new handyman has, uh. Uh, yeah, uh, feels that this is something that he could handle and, and can do, so. We, we gotta start there. Um. Port-alet I talked about and then a road study on, um, North Woken and Gulf Road. Should be, it, it, it probably spring, um, I believe they're waiting till the end of spring, the spring. I, I, I've been really bugging them about it, um, because especially for North Woken Road. Um, and it's critical that we get a good handle on, I think, record trailer traffic for. We're experiencing there. And, um. Um, so as far as the, the highway department is, uh, they've been grading roads, uh, burn removal, um. The brush cutting on the side is complete, um. And, uh, the, as mentioned, the guardrails will be going in this week. And I will be doing the paving project and we'll cover it. As far as complaints about, um, the roads go, it, it has been, um, flat tires from sharp rocks. Uh, dust, um, um. Right after grading, dust, usually pops up with some problems, um, but those are really the only two complaints. So that's that.
Ask this, this port-alet, could we have that put down on the? The ball field now, like, not on the. Across from, um, the Gulf Road. Is it possible to have it down there?
From the Gulf Road?
Across from the Gulf Road. I can't remember. The, the Almore Pond Road. Can we have it down there?
I think what I thought was that the red on roads here, back behind the pavilion and back in the woods.
And people using the pavilion. I mean, I just, my whole family used the pavilion this Sunday. We had a birthday party there. The grandson, and then we walked the rail trail, but if it wasn't me with a key, we would have no place to go to the bathroom. So, so, or if you were coming to the park, you know, on the weekend to enjoy it, you.
I'm just.
No facilities.
Right, what if you had no place to put it down there? At least there is.
It's just down the road a little bit down, um.
Yeah, I think we kind of identified there's an old, uh, utility pole in the woods there. Um, and so just directly by that pole is.
Right.
A nice little spot. So people from the trail can use it and people using our park pavilion can use it.
But it's not sitting right there in the trail. I guess you know, you know.
Right. And you can still have lunch and enjoy it.
Yeah, you can watch it pretty too.
And it will be plowed, so in the winter, it's a class three road, so if it needs to be. Um, exchanged or cleaned or something, it's tricky.
Love we can.
Have you guys, um, been watching cars parking on Elmore Pond Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
In Corley Hill Road, Corley Road, Elmore Pond Road and here. Um, but they seem to prefer those roads for some reason.
Small roads where there's no, any, any parking.
Well, they might not even know it here, but there's tons of people using it, um. You know, I see a lot of people using it, you know, walking their babies and strollers and stuff and.
Chickers or something.
You know, like Corley to Elmore Pond is a pretty short little foot walk.
No people around.
But they all, they're all parking, you know. I'm not sure whose land they're parking on. We just, we're gonna have to follow and make sure that, um. They're not parking on the, you know, watch and on Facebook, there's like, uh, friends of the law. They were complaining that there were a lot of cars on the Woken section this weekend.
Driving on the trail.
Yeah.
Driving on the trail.
That must tear it up a little bit.
So we really, I'm, I'm determined. I know when we had this P S bill, we talked about putting a gate in. But we needed to put something so cars could not drive down there. If there's an emergency, they can get on the garage, at the garage. They don't have to get on here. Um, and it's not that far a distance, but just it's such an open class three road that, um.
Well, the other problem is too, someone wants to get in there to do any logging, um. Uh, westovers, that's gonna cause an issue. Maybe traffic skaters across the, there are a lot of trucks across to get on, to her property, to do any logging or whatever.
Well, she owns land off of the, um, she owns land that connects to the hill. They can get off on her road, on her property. It's a town road there. I don't know.
Down, that house from that?
Yeah.
And it also brings up the point about e-bikes. From my understanding, the state said the only thing that's motorized is snowmobiles allowed on that rail trail.
No, I think they are allowing e-bikes. They, they have a mile, uh, miles per hour though. And they're marked. And we've had this, this, um, I'll finish it up at, at the end here. Uh, there is a memorial that on the rail, rail committee that is administratively, um. Run, um, through the planning commission and, um. They get paid from the state to have these regional committees. I've been attending for the last six or seven months, um. Now they're to the point of they really want, um. Someone from the town to be appointed to it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna take on another. Committee, but that's where you learn about all these things. Mike Green actually has been going. To some of those meetings. I'm not sure if he's interested, um. Pretty much they ta, they've been talking about, um. Signage, businesses, things like that, rules. And now that the, um, rail trail management plan just came out. I haven't had time to read it, um, it kinda tells who's in charge with what along the trail and so forth. I, I need to read that, but. I was gonna bring up in our next meeting that we need to appoint someone to that committee. That wants to, um. Represent Woken and our interests, like they were gathering, um. For the state, um, where air B and Bs are places to stay or businesses and so forth. That they could put on the state website, different things. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we're gonna talk about, um. I'll bring this up now, uh, so we're getting ready with our wastewater committee. Where we need to start having public outreach about it. Steph wanted to know how we were going to get the word out. About that, um.
We can do it through a newsletter or, um, a print works form.
Print work form newsletter. Normal postings you normally do around town.
Do you have thoughts, Joe? How would you try to reach out to people like up on hills?
How far from his newspaper? Wars and, um, general score. From the work form, these, uh, people, I've got all these social media. I'm just on the website, fury, entitled.
So, so one of our students, um, uh, Kelly called, I mean, uh, what's her?
Oh, the radio station, yeah.
And we got a couple of people who came, said, uh, only they, you know, they heard about it on the radio station, hadn't seen any other announcements. So I thought that was.
Yeah, they said they'll do it for you.
The one in Marsville?
Yeah.
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 That is well listened to. But if you wanna get the word out.
It's gonna be wrong.
I wish it was. Yeah, well, I thought of the newsletter, um, it's something we've talked about for quite a while. I actually talked to Maria this weekend because I just love your newsletter. It's so well done, so professional, um. I asked her about it. She got, um, a template from collaboration one. To, uh, put that together.
Did they mail that?
No. It's, it's online, yes.
The email's under big email, just okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, um, yeah. I thi, I think it is beautiful and, and, uh, um, actually probably, you know, the town's old. It seems like a good idea to have that much, um, you know, the format and, um, you know, presentation of it. And it is also a lot to be said for just, you know, sending like a, a sub stack email that, you know, simple. You know, that goes out to, to a downer, that's.
Right.
It's. And Maria does, you know, I mean, she's got a, a particular style that makes it fun to read, so.
Right.
I think we're lucky to have her doing that.
I think it would take a bit of work to set up the, you know, but once that was done, that would be. You know, it would be set and you can always add to it. All right. I'll get right on this.
Yeah.
Just teasing. Sorry. The last thing tonight is a shed discussion. Um, I've been working with Bob, our new maintenance person, um. He's a real organizer. He loves things organized and, um. So we're walking through the buildings and stuff. We have quite a ba, bit of outdoor stuff. That we really need to find outside shed for. A lot of stuff, community guard. It's taking up office space. Unless you have some other ideas.
You, you need a shed. I absolutely need a shed.
When you have poses and pot and stuff, you know, in your office, it gets. You need to find a home, some of this stuff.
So, uh, are you proposing the?
Well, I'm proposing the idea and I'm, I'm not sure how it's going over.
I think it sounds logical. You're talking what, eight by ten?
I'm not talking any size. I have tonight here, um, I'm throwing out the idea. See how you like it? I don't have a size. I brought in, um, this is the midnight ones. The size and prices, they are. When I looked at the ones that look, it doesn't look like those floors will last more than a year. They're like cardboard.
Done.
Yeah, I mean, so if you wanna throw your money away, you can, but if you want something to last for a while. Um, that's solid. I was hoping we can, we have a snow blower. You could even put the snow blower in there. Get one of those locks that with the numbers, you know, not be passing keys around to everyone else, out there and, um. And it'd be right there. I mean, when, when the snow's gonna go over the bus barn. Somehow lug it in a truck or something and run it to get it over here to, um.
They drive it down that little school street.
Is that what they do?
Yeah.
I mean, that's kinda.
You, you almost need an eight by ten minimum.
Yeah, but I, I think it's an excellent idea. It's a good one to say, I mean, the tools are really mounting up. And.
And they're expensive. And they're expensive.
See fancy, I, I'm not even looking for fancy or anything.
Probably should lock things out of this room.
Eight by ten, um. It's about thirty-five hundred. So if you like the idea, uh, I, maybe Deb and I and Bob, we can take a look down at the maintenance. See what we get at, at our guest meeting. We could come back with a price. Um, if we don't take one off the lot, then we are looking at maybe August or so. But it would give us time to at least, um. Investigate.
Well, it sounds like it's something that's very.
It really is, um, just a matter of that and where would be the most logical spot to put it, honest. Outdoors.
We don't need a generator.
Yeah, somewhere in that area. It would be there behind, behind the generator from the very end of the garden, the public garden, my parents. You know, yard, um, somewhere in there. So you're thinking eight by ten is what we should look at?
No. By the time you get a snow blower in there, you try to leave it around, you gotta have that. Trust me, I got a snow blower. You got to have the room.
Yeah.
Right. I'm surprised it's still in over there, cause it's in the bus barn open.
No, it hasn't been stolen yet.
No.
It's worth stealing. Mark the bees, the blowers, the hot. No. If you ever use one, they're not real harm.
And speaking of which, I think one thing I, um. missed when my report is that Bob has a background in thirty something years with stove uh as a maintenance person there. And as a result, he has pretty high standards. Um, and when he does a project, he wants to uh do it right. Um, so for instance, the, looking for a solution for the bears and the compost transfer station. Um, we have electric fence kind of jury wired up there. Um, so he went out and got an estimate for a full wire bin kind of thing that'll last forty years or something. Um, so uh I I think it's great. It really kind of lifts the standards, but some of this gets to be uh uh we're not stove.
No. We can accept donations and start paying for it, right?
But it fixed that bid on the generator that's
Yeah.
I was happy about.
Yeah. Still a lot of good things, yeah.
Well, you could always invest into the uh solar powered one that I have at my house from tractor supply.
Yeah.
They're only two hundred dollars.
That's what we have.
That's what we have.
Yeah.
But how big is it?
Where it works, it's uh
Well, my thing is, mine's good for fifty miles.
Yeah.
And if you got it in that small of a concentration, anything within a foot's gonna know.
And they, the weather works. It keeps the bears in, that's for sure.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna grab it and find out, I don't know, director. You got the feeling back in your fingers?
Yeah, so that's a pretty good show.
They don't sell them anymore. They used to call them weed whackers. Often. It would take grass and burn it off. It was so bad, it would freeze children off. So we can't sell that amperage anymore. But I do have one. We'll 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 keep that under advisement. Oh, yes. We will make you take notice.
Okay, if there's anything else?
Make a motion. But wait, it's your job.
This is, if I make a motion, no, we but during this, like, we eight minutes before eight. We'll start with that.
Second, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Sorry, younger one will be in bed, but